He has a POW MIA dedication he'd like to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
This coming Sunday, thousands of members of an organization called Rolling Thunder will be descending upon Washington, DC. We've got a member of Rolling Thunder from Bellingham with us tonight, Rocco Boratoni. He'll also be heading down to Washington, DC. Rolling Thunder, for twenty-seven years now, has really been pushing to make sure that our POWs and our men and women who are missing in action get the due notice that they deserve for their sacrifice to the country. Along those lines, back in February, I had the pleasure at a formal session of the House to meet a gentleman named Joe Dentremont. And he is the president of the Massachusetts chapter of Rolling Thunder. And he spoke to the House, he addressed the entire Assembly. And he's a man on a mission. He would like to see a POW MIA chair in every town hall in the Commonwealth. And I know there's a movement afoot across the country to try to do so as well. So I reached out to the organization that he'd recommended. And I've ordered chairs for each of my four towns in my district, just as a small token of respect and appreciation for those who never came home. Just to put some framework around it, there are ninety-one thousand seven hundred and nineteen members who have not come home from war since World War I. Ninety-one thousand seven hundred and nineteen people unaccounted for. And I mean, that's an awful lot of parents and loved ones who don't know where their serviceman or service woman is. The important thing, and it's one of the mottos of Rolling Thunder, and I'm gonna read it to you. It says, "America's POW MIA's will never die until they are forgotten." So their effort in promoting this across the Commonwealth and also across the country is to make sure that we don't forget those brave men and women. So it's with great honor and utmost respect with which I donate a POW MIA chair to the town of Millville. May it remain forever empty in town hall until the last of our missing veterans returns home. So if you join me and we can unveil this, one of the board members and accept this on behalf of the town. This is a POW MIA, you are not forgotten. Since World War I, more than ninety-one thousand soldiers are unaccounted for. This unoccupied seat is dedicated to the memory of those brave men and women and to the sacrifices each made serving this country. So thank you for accepting on behalf of the town.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Next, we've got quite a few announcements tonight. Thank you to everyone who attended the special town meeting on May twelfth. We had an excellent turnout compared to previous years and hope everyone stays involved. Next is the Board of Selectmen meetings for the month of June have been rescheduled to, from June second and June fourth, and changed to June ninth and June twenty-third due to holiday and, not holiday, but vacations of the board and conflicts. So hopefully that doesn't screw up anybody's plans that likes to come to our meetings. Also, Memorial Day Parade will step off at eleven AM this year from the corner of Central in Providence and conclude at the Veterans Memorial Park on Main Street for a brief ceremony. We hope everyone comes out, comes out to tribute to our men and women who lost their lives for our country. Also, reappointment letters have been sent out to all town officials whose terms expire June thirtieth. Please return the signed letter promptly if you're interested in reappointment. The board will make FY two thousand fifteen appointments during the June twenty-third BOs meeting. The board appreciates the work of all board committee members and hope you will continue to serve our town. A limited number of copies of the annual town reports are still available at the town hall. The report can also be viewed online on the homepage of the town's website, millvilleMA.org. The town's newly revised bylaws are also available for viewing of the homepage, on the homepage of the town's website. The board wishes to congratulate our graduating high school seniors, Blackstone Millville Regional, as well as Blackstone Valley Tech, and wish you all the best of luck in your future endeavors. The executive secretary will be out of the office during the first week of June. Please contact the town hall's business office with any questions or concerns. If necessary, the office secretary will contact the Board of Selectmen for further direction. Next, we have approval of minutes for April eighth, Executive Session, two thousand fourteen.
Motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of April eighth, two thousand fourteen, Executive Session.
Next, we have May fifth, two thousand fourteen, at seven PM. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for May fifth at seven PM. All in favor? Next is May fifth, Executive Session, two thousand fourteen.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for Executive Session for May fifth, two thousand fourteen.
All in favor? And last is May twelfth, two thousand fourteen, at six thirty PM.
Motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of May twelfth at six thirty.
All in favor? Any warrants tonight, ma'am?
We do have warrants. First, of the payroll deductions dated May fifth, two thousand fourteen, in the amount of four thousand six hundred seventy-two dollars and seven cents. Next is the vendor warrant dated May nineteenth in the amount of fifty-three thousand one hundred sixty-three dollars and twenty-seven cents. That's a little higher than usual. That includes a rubbish collection and disposal payment on there. And the payroll dated, for the pay period ending May seventeenth, is thirty-eight thousand seven hundred forty-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Motion to approve the warrants.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have the reports of town officials. So we have the Board of Assessors.
Okay, good evening. Thank you for having us tonight.
You're welcome.
Just gonna go over this little punch list with you. We changed our meeting days from Tuesday to Wednesday. We now usually meet the fourth Wednesday of the month at five o'clock. Seems to be working.
Okay, good.
No general public that comes, but we get our business done. We started using magnetic car signs on the field appraisers vehicles, so it cuts down on calls to the police department.
Okay.
We have those in the office.
Okay.
So we use those.
Yeah.
Done at a significant cost savings since we use, oh no, wrong one. Great, we reduced, okay. The building data was updated on the assessor's maps. It was done at a significant cost savings since we used the data from the Mass GIS project and then scheduled the update during our regular map updating time period.
Do you know what that means, the buildings as drawn on the Mass GIS?
Oh, yeah, 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 okay.
Okay, and now that recodifying of the town's bylaws has been completed and the bylaws have been published, the BOA plans to address the house numbering bylaw and the safety issue of those addresses whose physical locations don't match their actual address locations. Right now, we're working with Boy Scouts to see if one of the Eagle Scouts wants to take that on as his project.
Okay, good.
So that would save us some money.
Yeah, good night, dear. Good, thank you.
And according to the DOI directives from this and the previous recertification, we're supposed to inspect the new sales properties ourselves in order to maintain accurate property cards. An acceptable solution was to have MLS in order to check all real estate sales in Millville for accuracy, as well as what is currently on the market. This has been added to the workload and has already produced results in an increased property card accuracy and in the identification of those properties that require a physical visit. An unexpected result of this discovery of properties with possible permit septic or other violations for forwarding to the other departments. So we're able to catch some things that have been falling through the cracks.
Here, follow up on the, on the background.
Well, we forwarded to the appropriate department for them to follow up. It's not our jurisdiction.
Okay, and there are several other items on the directives listed need to be accomplished, and we're working to fulfill them, such as mailing of the income and expense forms and the maintenance of an income and expense in forms of list notebook. Anything you wanna say on that?
Um, just what it is, is the note is supposed to keep track of who we sent it to, how many people we charged it. And we're supposed to keep improving on that somehow.
Yeah.
So we're starting off by starting the official notebook as opposed to just, you know, filing the type of thing.
Okay.
Okay, and we'll have the valuation companies' field appraiser going out shortly to finish property inspections in preparation for the preliminary taxes.
That will be it for a hundred percent? The evaluation, when they get done?
For this year, no.
No, for the town. When are you gonna do that again?
Well, it's done over a time period of about nine years.
Oh, nine years?
Yeah, I think it's nine years. Every three years, we have recertification. I think the total, a hundred percent of it should be done over nine years.
Okay.
So there's just no way we could possibly undo all of it and less. It's not easy.
No, right. No, I know that.
Yeah, doing parts.
Yeah.
Okay.
What do you have, approximately twelve hundred residents?
Excuse me?
Yeah, approximately twelve hundred.
Um, I think it was thirteen... Thirteen thirty-four at last count. It might be, if you know.
Okay, and lastly, we're in the process of going through and sorting the maps that have been stored in the assessor's office, trying to find a way to preserve and find a suitable storage method for the old aerial photo maps. So if you guys can come up with.
It's gonna set up and they're kinda big and they're all rolled up.
Yeah.
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 If anybody wants to, we tried to, I approached the Historical Commission to see if they wanted, they were interested, but I don't think they, I'm not sure whether it was funding or where it put them.
Yeah.
So at this point, I'm just trying to straighten them, hang them, and hopefully, if you have any ideas.
Okay. Think about it. See if we can think of something.
Okay, and that was about everything we had. If you have any questions.
I don't.
Thank you.
I don't.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, first public forum. Correspondence. We can cover this under Jennifer's, this letter from the chief. We have this from Mr. Fernandez. Everybody saw that. I'm not from him, but from the lawyer.
I read it.
Okay. That's it. Might miss anything? I don't think so. They already did that. Next, no appointments or resignations. So Helen, do you have a report?
Yeah, very brief. We just received word on Friday that Boston has approved National Grid's overhead transmission project.
Okay.
So that will be going full force now. I do have, it's a rather thick decision from the state. If anybody wants to take a look at that, I have that in my office.
Helen, do we have, remember they were supposed to set up an email list?
We did. I did consult with, with Mike, who is our representative, Mike Peterson. He asked if there was anything our town officials wanted in addition. And I made sure that, I told him you wanted residents to be emailed, if at all possible, and all town officials included on an email list. So I think they're covering really every basis. They're doing phone calls, they're doing hard mailings, emails, meetings.
Well, I know the night they came, there was some residents who wanted to submit their names. I think they actually took emails at that point, although they were given, I think they were given someone to contact to get themselves on there. So I just wanna make sure that we're covering the bases for them.
Yep, that seems to be working fine. And the other item is, last Friday, the Municipal Center Building Committee met with the two finalists, the engineering firms.
Okay.
And the chairman, Mr. Corvella, will be presenting the committee's recommendation to the board on June ninth.
Okay.
So that will be on the next agenda. And that's it.
Old Business, we have, excuse me, Veterans Donation Account under Old Business.
And Mr. Barber is here this evening. If you recall, Mr. Barber had requested the board give some consideration to the creation of a Veterans Assistance Fund,
Right.
working with the treasure collector and the town accountant as well as Mr. Barber. This is what we came up with. The front page here is the guidelines by which the account would be managed. And the second page is what I'm proposing be mailed with the tax bills as the flyer. So just looking for thoughts, comments, and hopefully approval.
There's two things I'd like to say.
Yeah.
If I may.
Sure.
The first, I spoke to Helen earlier this evening, under eligibility, this is pretty much exclusively a discretionary account. In order to be eligible, any, anybody that comes forward looking for aid would have to apply for Chapter one fifteen benefits first.
Okay.
That makes, you pretty much bury your soul and then the decision-making process is a lot easier as to whether or not you're financially in need of funds that aren't available to you.
Okay.
This isn't just money to hand out to anybody that walks in the door. You gotta put yourself forward and apply just like everyone else. And if you don't qualify, then it gets into the gray area of why don't you qualify? And what can we do to get you over the hump?
Okay.
But if you're not willing to submit to the rigmarole that everyone else does, then it's not for you.
Okay, that's fair.
I think that, that needs to be written into the rules.
Okay.
The other thing is, at the last meeting, it was brought up, somewhat to my chagrin, that maybe Millville should look to regionalize this position. And while I don't wanna get into that tonight, some considerations should be given to that before this is instituted, so that if that ever happens, the funds stay in Millville and, and the purpose is maintained. Because you're asking people to donate money to the veterans of Millville.
Yeah.
And it needs to be addressed now, so that if the rules change down the road, the intent of the person that donated today is still there and it's maintained. That's pretty important to me at this point in time.
So we're gonna add in.
I don't know how you address it.
If we add into this guideline, that we, first, they have to fill out the Chapter one fifteen. And then also, if the town were ever to merge with town A, B, or C, doesn't matter, all Millville donations will stay with Millville veterans. And it needs to be worded in somewhat that way.
Yeah, I don't know how I would feel about that.
That way, we're protected forever.
Well, I think under the eligibility, it says current town and Millville resident and for at least one year prior to assistance. So that would cover that, that aspect of it.
Okay.
I did speak with the town accountant about that concern, and she didn't seem to be very concerned about that. Her feeling was the funds would be, you know, used at the discretion of the veteran service officer, whoever that may be, for the benefit of Millville residents. And she wouldn't allow anything other than that. So, you know, if five years from now, our veteran service officer is working out of North Bridge, it would be at his discretion, but only for Millville residents.
Okay.
I would make a motion to approve this guideline as amended to include the application process.
Chapter one fifteen benefits.
Chapter one fifteen benefits.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anything else that you recommend on that?
No, Helen sent me a copy of this, and I sent a few changes, and she incorporated most of them. That one seemed to slip under the door, but that's pretty important. The one time this has come up in my ten years doing this was that individual went through the whole process and, you know, I was able to get a fair amount of aid through the state at a one-time, we'll help you over the hump. But it certainly didn't get them through a long call for her, so, you know, that's the intent and the purpose of this fund. Thank you very much. The veterans and their families in Millville, thank you as well. Hopefully, over time, the residents will get behind this and it will benefit some people in the future.
Yeah.
Thanks.
All right, you're welcome. Thank you.
Is this gonna be included in the mailing in June?
Yes.
And who?
Just the flyer, not the guidelines.
Right, the flyer. Who's going to be putting those in the envelopes? I don't wanna incur, I don't wanna put more on.
It's yet the general clerical. It's usually high school or college students.
Okay, all right. I was gonna say, 'cause I mean, this is something that may be, like, right up the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts alley, you know what I mean, to assist and do something if we're not able to. You know, I don't wanna put it on Lisa and the staff that needs to be, other things.
No, we have a clerical.
Okay, all right.
And I just wanna confirm, Mr. Repose, your motion was to accept both the guidelines and the flyer?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Helen. I do not have the toll day request.
No, it's because I have it.
I wonder.
Uh, yeah. The Millville Fire Rescue is looking to hold a toll day on September sixteenth
Okay.
from nine to one. And their request has been approved by both Chief Landry and Mr. Malali as the highway surveyor.
Motion to accept. Motion to accept a toll date for, what was the date?
September sixteenth.
September sixteenth.
Second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next, we have Members Forum, and.
I just wanted to touch base. I see that we got the email from Chief Landry in regards to the noise ordinance. I just wanted to follow up because it was originally sent to me.
Yes.
Wanted to make sure. I will let Mr., um,
MacDamar.
MacDamar know what has been said here and see if there's anything else that we need to do
Okay.
for him. The other thing we had talked about was the town clerk liaison. I didn't know, Helen, if you had mentioned to her any, I know we had asked Brian the other night, but a way in order to communicate and get, make sure we get things done. So I didn't know if we had any follow-up or if that's something we wanna do. I mean, it's not, it's just something that they feel comfortable with.
Yeah.
I don't wanna, it's not a foster.
If they, if they wanna communicate direct to you or if they prefer one of the five of us or the five next members.
Right.
Um, I have to apologize. I didn't hear the town clerk be mentioned. I know you had brought it up for, about Brian, and he's comfortable working with Christine.
Right. Maybe it was in my brain and I didn't say it.
Yeah, I didn't even make a note of that. So I haven't.
I just know that we got a couple of emails in regards to, you know, I just wanna make sure that things are done and
Right.
rather than, because sometimes I think a personal touch and a conversation on two people's own time works nicely. So, and with that, was then kinda prelude, a parent brought to my attention about the Maspa, the parents group at the elementary school. Because of everything that had occurred, there was a lot of misinformation at the town meeting, leading into the town meeting, not being informed and things of that, such as that. I know Joe did the education budget, but I'm wondering, I'm just trying to figure out how we can do it better. And I think a lot of people will agree with that, I think. And it's not something we have to, you know, obviously do now, but I don't know how to open those lines of communications up, so that it doesn't have to be a meeting or whether, you know, it's just conversations, but it's a flow of information that's appropriate, that's meaningful, and that it's, it goes somewhere, rather than just conversation. I don't know how we, how we tackle that or what we do in order to do that with, I mean, is it something, Joe, like, if we put it on the agenda, if you're going to the budget meetings, that you report back at every meeting? You know, is that something we should have asked, rather than just catching a conversation? So it's not asking anyone to establish anything new. It's just a matter of, kind of tweaking what we're doing.
Mr. Corvella and I attended a great number of meetings. And it is my intent, and I believe Mr. Corvella's intent, I don't wanna put words in his mouth, but he's also indicated, I think, that beginning this new fiscal year, coming fiscal year, that we have a strong presence on both our parts at school committee meetings, not just budget meetings. And just to outline going forward, you know, what we feel some input on town matters in relationship to the budget. So I intend to stay involved regardless of a select board member or a resident in the town.
I'm just wondering if we should put that as like an agenda item when it starts to get a little heavier, you know what I mean? There's some of the things we were hearing for the first time as a board.
Yep.
Some things weren't asked of us as a board. I'm just trying to figure out how to, how to make it work. So maybe that's something come October, when they start the budget process,
Yep.
we think about. And same thing with the parents group, because the medium in which they discuss their items is through social media and a lot of misconceptions can be put out there.
A lot of misinformation.
A lot of misinformation. And everybody, and everybody means well. You know, I'm not saying that someone's out there purposefully trying to, you know, throw the train off the tracks, but we've just gotta kind of clean that up a bit, at least in our meetings, and making sure we're informed. And then the last thing on my, my Members Forum was the education budget. Now, we know that it goes to Blackstone, and I don't know what's gonna happen with that. We don't know what's gonna happen with the, if the school committee would call a super meeting. And I sent this to Helen on Thursday, and I think I was able to, I think I I think I found out about the Fangcom meeting maybe on Friday, so it, I think my education budget concerns will probably come up at their meeting, cause it is an agenda item. I don't wanna be, I don't wanna be caught behind. I'd rather be proactive and have some plan in place and I'm glad that the Fangcom has that on their meeting. Um, so that we can, you know, we're not caught, we're not deer in the headlights trying to figure out what we're gonna do if we're forced to do something, so. I, I just wanna be able to make a, you know, ha- have a, be able to make a sound decision and not a rushed decision, cause it's. Anything I hate more is being asked to do something right then and there without being informed, cause I always feel like I'm being bamboozled. So I always like to sit back and, and take it in. So I do plan on being there Wednesday evening and hopefully, is that gonna be a topic of your conversation? Is it planned as the chair, as the agenda item?
I'm sorry. Oh, you mind? I don't, I don't know. Um, I think to a certain degree it would be. I don't think it's, um, really a good time to start talking about specific cuts we would have to make. I think we should talk about possible courses of action, uh, that we should go, we should think about, uh, um. I'm not sure, uh, of what takes place if in fact Blackstone votes yes. Um, is there an opportunity for it to come back before, um, the town of Millville, before it would go to a super town meeting? I'm unclear of that. I was unclear of that at town meeting night when our lawyer was talking. Is it automatically go to a super town meeting, um, on that? I would hope if it could come back to the town prior to that, so we would be able to take a look at things and see what, what our options are. I'm not sure what our options would be at a super town meeting or, you know, given the. Well, given the population differences between Millville and Blackstone, I don't know, I'm not sure where that would go, so. I'd prefer to be able to have some courses of action as to how we would approach the issue, uh, beforehand. But I wouldn't get to the point where we, we'd start looking at this line item, looking at that line item, because that really involves all the town departments at that point. Bringing them in. That's almost like starting from scratch.
And then it involves another special town meeting to create a new budget.
Exactly, exactly. Right now, we have an approved budget.
That's right.
That's it.
And I don't know how you go from having an approved budget to reopening that thing. I'm not. This is my first year at the rodeo, so.
It's gonna be a can of worms.
Yeah.
I'll tell you that.
Does anyone know if, um, Millville, um, sorry, Blackstone's selecting a meeting tomorrow?
I'm not sure on that, um.
Does BLM have a business plan yet?
Their meeting is the, their town meeting is the twenty seventh.
You know, that, that, that was part of the concern. Jen brought up about what to do next, better next year. We had been meeting with the school committee in early January. Our finance committee was getting together and meeting here. But by the time we got a number from the school, we had already almost built a budget because we had to.
Yep.
Uh, so it was difficult. It was almost like dumping that giant number on top of what we already had. And the number they gave us didn't give us any room whatsoever to really even discuss the merits of it, because it was just simply impossible, that first number. The second number came in three days before our town meeting and it didn't give us any opportunity to debate it. Would've loved to been able to debate that number and see what, where it went, but we didn't even have that opportunity. Went right to town meeting. So next year, I think we should look at, um, I looked at their policy manual online. It says the towns can ask for a budget from the school committee as early as December thirty first of the, of the, that year, uh, going into it. The sooner they can get us a number, the better it is. We can work it, uh, with all our town departments, with all, uh, the senior leadership here at the table and figure out. What our options are, but to get it so late in the season, um, didn't help and to get the last one right before town meeting.
Rich, my question to you on that, is when they give us the budget, and I'm a little vague on this, is it a certified budget from the school?
Right, they had to vote.
If you, if you ask for it in December and they say, fine, we'll give it to you, is that a certified number?
I don't know. That's, there was one line at the bottom of, uh, um, the page. It said the towns have the right to ask for the budget.
Yep.
As early as, I'm not sure if it's certified or not.
Where I'm going with this is say, okay, we get the budget, we give it to you, we, you know, we handle it, you handle it, we go through the whole thing and all of a sudden they say. Uh, this is gonna be our other budget. Finally at the end, they give us a certified budget.
Well.
And it's a whole different, and then we're.
Well, we, we got two certified budgets. They recertified, we got the certified one and then several weeks later, we got the recertified one.
That's what I'm saying. How many times can they do this? I mean, how, how do, how does?
I, I don't know, Joe, to be honest with you.
This is the first time I've ever seen this happen, like just days before town.
Yeah, but the thing, what I'm saying to you, Jennifer, is how, how the heck can this town, like Rich said, even have room if they keep on recertifying the number? They just keep on, they go high and then they go to a next level and then they go, where, where is the number? I mean, what are you certifying? They're all over the place.
I think they only go down when they recertify.
Yeah, but the thing is, is people start getting a little antsy and get a little kinda questioning. A lot of answers started flying around, a lot of questions. And they weren't getting the right answers, like, like you guys said before, uh, we would get mixed, mixed things and the thing is, they finally turn around and says, what is the number? They never, never got the number. You know, they kept on going down, but we never, and then they certified a number on us. It's like you said, Rich, it's very difficult. For your board to finally come up with a number to find out where you stand and that's my question.
I always thought that there was a date in their budget. They have a date for their certified number.
Right, there is.
Now whether, is that mandated by, is that governed by state law to be so many days out from the meeting? So I don't know, I, I don't know this answer.
I, I printed that off and I, and it, it goes by certain Sundays or certain days, um, of the month or something. But it did reference Mass General Law.
Right.
And it was, I couldn't follow where they were.
Because I was, I was surprised. I mean, heading in certified budget dates before.
Well, maybe that's a question we need to answer, so at least we have a base that we know where we stand, that if it, they can't keep on changing that.
And, and at our meeting that we had at Blackstone, Millville was well represented there, more so than Blackstone.
Yep.
And, you know, I was the one who had said, are you asking us for two and a half? And they said, well, we're not gonna tell you how to fund it. And, and you had said, we agree that you probably need more, but we don't know what that rate number is.
Right.
Blackstone said the same thing. We can't give you all of it, but we can look. And everybody walked away from the table and there was, there was nothing else. That I know of that, that sparked any conversation until kind of that, that eleventh hour frenzy of, of all those events that. You know, led us into town meeting.
But you know, and forgive me, I could be wrong on this one, but we went to a lot of meetings, Joe, and going up to that last meeting. I wasn't under the impression the budget was as bad as what they presented to us that last night. I really wasn't.
Do you feel that there was a lot of fudge in that?
No, 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 talk about fudge, John. I wanna talk about, I didn't think it was gonna be that big of a deficit that they were gonna present.
A number of times I asked for something tangible, give us something to hang a hat on. And, uh, oh, we understand, but we never get the tangibility, the tangible item.
And I think, and I think a valid point was that the way in which it was budgeted with the previous superintendent. Was probably not the best way to, to fund their budget. And I think that they made that clear and that they're trying to right their wrongs. And it's, it's not, it's not looking.
Yeah, if you just took the, one of their slides that kept showing how much from year after year, they're using the E and D account to do it. And I may be wrong with this one too, but I mean, this year they had that three hundred thousand dollar accounting error, which didn't allow them to take from E and D anymore. And the music stopped and all of a sudden, we've got this big problem here.
Yep.
I also think it took fresh eyes.
Probably, probably, on there, um, a new look at the number and see, this is exactly what it is. I'm not sure. You know, I don't know, to be honest with you, but you, you know, you went to that meeting the other day with, um, Senator Moore. And they were talking about how the philosophies changed from fifty-two to forty-eight percent, fifty-two that the towns pay, forty-eight that the state's gonna pay. So apparently, this isn't gonna get any better. This is still gonna be a.
Well, it can get better. Right now, chap-
In November, if people show up to vote, it can get way better.
Well.
That's a, that's a big if.
That's a big if, yeah.
Big if.
Yeah.
Nice, but it's a big if. Right now, the state, uh, supports chapter seventy per student at fifty-two percent. And local communities at forty-eight percent. They're looking to reverse that. With the trade-off being that it's gonna be helped with transportation.
They're gonna put more money in transportation, yeah.
But it's all smoke and mirrors, yeah.
It is. It's falling back on the towns to fund more than they've ever did, it appears, so.
It's smoke and mirrors by, from Boston to us is what it is. It's really not gonna benefit us in any way. So.
Make it worse.
Uh, I'm not, I don't know. I think going into, tomorrow night was basically to discuss, you know, courses of action. Based on the what-if, not to really go into cut, start looking at budget numbers, because you need the whole, support all the, all the town departments to do that and it's. You know, that could be for nothing. If they vote no, it's over. They vote yes, what's the, what's the next steps? And that's where I really don't know. Do we get a shot at it before super town meeting or, or not?
If they call it.
If they call it.
I mean, I'm basically, I've made my opinion and, and plan on contacting, um, the school committee after Blackstone's depending upon. But, I mean, with the population being, I mean, that's really forcing the will of Blackstone voters upon Millville and that bothers me. That bothers me greatly, um, and like I said, I mean, my kid's in that mix. She's going into a class of thirty kids next year. I get it. But, I mean, we need to, we need to look at, we can't, we can't do that to the towns. It's, it's, I can't even imagine, um, relationship wise, but. Not only that, but I think there's other things we need to look at, you know, a level service budget, um, you know. And a lot of talk has been about the, the hundred and twenty for the assistant and I, and I work in education. I get why you need an assistant. But you know what? Suits don't teach, okay? I mean, they sit in an office and they, and they do it and they, they've gotta keep those teachers there and that's just my opinion. That's my soapbox today. But, um, it's not a level service budget. They could have three teachers with that one person, plus it wasn't funded this year. You know, the money was there and wasn't, the person's not there, so, I mean, you've got two years of that money and that's, that's. I mean, that's one salary. That's what they're asking from us. That's a hard pill to swallow for me. Um, you know, essentially, our money would pay that salary and, uh, you know, in the meantime, I think, I think that people have to be active and, you know, plan on. Stay involved and find out what's going on, but I just wanna make sure that we are prepared, that we don't forced into something and then we don't know what's going on, so. I just want discussion. I don't, like you said, you can't pull in department heads right now until after next Tuesday.
No, no, it's not.
And then depending on what the school committee, when they meet and when, what they decide to do.
Yeah.
So, I just. It's not a very pretty situation.
No, it's not and I, I followed Menden and Upton when they went through this very similar situation a couple of years ago. It was pretty ugly, you know, it never got to a super town meeting.
No.
But it never got healed either.
No.
After the years, it's, and it's, it's, it ends up being two towns fighting over something they have absolutely no control over and you're right. It's all due to the fact that we're not getting, uh, enough to maintain what is supposed to be.
We get less funding.
Yeah.
And we get less funding for local aid for chapter seventy and on top of that, we get more unfunded mandates. And we have some older mandates that were funded that are no longer funded.
Yeah.
The Quinn bill for one, that's a big one, for us especially.
Yeah, and we fund, we balanced our budget with free cash.
Right.
Uh, so we're behind right now. We didn't have enough money coming in to meet our requirements. We took it out of the free cash side of the house, which is not.
Which is not good.
Not a good thing, you know.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich.
Like I said, I wanted it on there before I knew they were meeting, so I think.
Mister Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to bring something up.
Yeah?
This meeting. This is, uh, for, uh, this is, I'm requesting an agenda item for our next meeting.
Okay.
And that is, uh, Tim, uh, Labonte and Jesse Gufo have, have looked at the, uh, cable control. And they're making a proposal to, um, move it to, to this corner. Because of efficiency and improvement in, in, uh, cable operations.
Okay.
So, uh, I handed this out for you to look at it and, uh, I, I'm requesting an agenda item for our next meeting for discussion and vote. On the proposal.
Alright, and it, yeah, that's not gonna cost the town, it's all coming out of the, the cable money.
It's all cable money.
From John, the money from John.
Uh, it, it, it's more of an aesthetic thing, maybe question.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but, uh. It'll make it more workable for, for the cable guys.
Alright, and at the same time, you check for historical, cause you're not gonna touch any walls, right?
I, I go further add that the, uh, cable commission, uh, the cable, uh.
I know, I know one of the members is on the story.
And, and that member approved.
Okay.
The proposal.
Alright, so, alright, and then as well as moving that stuff, could this be incorporated? The wires that I'm sitting on here?
Certainly.
Cause they keep getting wrapped.
I know.
Yeah.
You have that problem?
It's not safe either, you know?
No, no. He, he's basically for the microphone, but he can do something.
What are you just doing now? I mean, if the, well, if.
It has to be.
If the guy's gonna move everything, he'll be moving all the wires anyway, if he can just redo these.
No, I know.
Cause right now, all these leave here, go underneath and go all the way over there anyway, so. If he's gonna reroute them from there, he may as well make a new home.
So you wanna bring this up at next meeting?
Yeah, the reason for that is because it wasn't on the agenda.
I, I understand. Thank you.
I do it now. Okay.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Joe. Alright, and you got all your items, Jennifer, right?
Yep.
Okay, so final public forum? None. Our next regular meeting is Monday, June ninth, two thousand fourteen, at seven P M. We will next do signatures and then, uh, we have no executive session tonight and immediately after signatures, we will adjourn.
Can I just ask who this chair is going to be?
I was just gonna leave it in this room unless you have another. Or we could put in the veterans' meeting room upstairs for help.
I think it, you know, I don't know.
It should be on display, I think.
It should be, yeah, it should be, at least initially. I mean, I don't wanna talk, I was thinking the veterans' room, but it's.
No one in the season.
It's not utilized up there.
You go to forty, I, I would like to see it in a fiberglass case or something.
At least on a platform, small.
Platform.
Yeah.
Yeah, because if you put it in the office, like I could.
The little kids would wanna sit on it.
My kids would climb on it, just because that's what they do.
But if it's up on a platform, then it.
No, then they stand on it and jump from it.
Right.
Yeah, no, I just, I'd just like to see something, so, so it's respected and it's easy to figure that out. Okay.
I'll have to find, find a home floor in the office. Uh, okay, just some signatures and then we adjourn or?
Did Jen see that?
Oh, yeah, you want to hear?
Four, four. I wanted to ask you something about this.
Keep them flying.
No, it's fine.
The Bruins ain't on, but I know there is a hockey.
Well, yeah, it doesn't really.
So.
You mean you don't cower into the fetal position till next season?
No, here's what it is.
Cause that happens in my house.
The Canadians have a.
Oh, yeah, they're bringing it to.
Canadians have an unbelievable goalie and here's what it is. Now he's out for the season though. He got hurt the other night.
He will say that.
I don't know, the range is, they're pretty hard. They, they are hard, but they, but they're not shooting against, uh, Carey Price either.
Interesting.
So.
Oh. There's the other guy.
I've got. Look and do some thank you.
Hmm?
Don't want to say thank you.
Your wife says I got a better deal than she did. I didn't think that, she buys down with the.
The biggest camera to have a seat.
You want more?
Not yet.
You will follow me all over the place. Mister Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
You got it. I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Yeah, Jennifer, I thought you were gonna do that.
Hmm?
You like to do that.